Hello and welcome to the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education. I'm Brooke Pino.
And I'm Sarang Nayar.
This year, we have seven candidates seeking election for three open Bridgewater positions for the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education.
The candidates are Emily Kalistri, Kim Fahardo, Lucy Lee, Jim Maloney, Kethrin Maxwell, Deanna Nayar, and Steve Singer.
The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement which may include personal and professional background, reasons for seeking election, and what the candidate feels their role will be on the board. Following the opening statement, the candidates will answer three questions. Each candidate will be given up to three minutes to answer each question. Following three questions, each candidate will be given two minutes to give a closing statement. In interest of time, Sarang and I will request that the time limits be adhered to throughout the evening. We will hold our hands up when each candidate has 30 seconds remaining, so please try to complete the statements when you see one of our hands. Let's go to the opening statements, beginning with Ms. Kalistri.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Emily Kalistri, and I am running for reelection to the Bridgewater Raritan Board of Education. I am a proud mom of two wonderful boys, ages eight and eleven. My older son, Thomas, is in fifth grade at Hillside. My younger son, Christopher, is in third grade at Crim. I have been married for 12 years, and we moved to Bridgewater in 2016, choosing in the town because my husband grew up here. I grew up in Glen Ridge, New Jersey. I attended Rutgers University, where I received my elementary education certificate and then my special education certificate. I then taught in Orange, New Jersey for one year and Essex Spells, New Jersey, for eight years. I loved my time in the classroom, but when I had my older son, I decided I wanted to be homeworker. So I received my real estate license, and I currently work for Callahan Banker. When I'm not selling homes or driving my boys around activities, I'm on the baseball field or enjoying time at Lifetime Fitness, reading, or spending time with family. I am seeking reelection for the Board of Education because I believe that we need fair-minded, thoughtful leaders who prioritize the best interests of our children. I have no political motivations. My only goal is to do what's right for students and support the success of our schools. With a background in education, I bring a deep understanding of how schools operate and what students and teachers truly need to succeed. During my three years on the board, I have developed a strong understanding of educational policy, school governance, and the complex challenges our district faces. These experiences have reinforced my commitment to serving students and have equipped me to advocate for them more effectively. Lastly, I would like to thank the Bridgewater CSA, Mr. Black, Mr. Linsor, Mr. Hamburger, and all of the students who are here tonight to put together this wonderful event. Thank you to all the residents for your support. And again, I'm Emily Kalistri, and I'm asking for your vote on November 4th. Vote column C.
Good evening, Bridgewater. I'm Kim Fahardo, and I've lived in Bridgewater for the last seven years with my husband and our two children, Noah, who's 14, and Lucia, who's six. We also have a rambunctious Australian shepherd, whose name is Odin, and he's five. Prior to living in Bridgewater, my family has lived in Hillsborough, Montclair, Den Helen, and briefly in Costa Rica. I grew up right next door in Hillsborough. I attended Fairleigh Dickinson University for my BS and my MBA. After graduation, I worked in IT for about seven years before going back to FDU to get my MAT. After graduating with that, I became a teacher, and I taught in Hillsborough for about five years, both at the middle school and high school level. Currently, I'm back in IT, working at a pharmaceutical company as a portfolio director. Outside of work, I play kickball in the summer. I run at least one half marathon a year and some shorter races, and I can be persuaded to participate in a Spartan race or a Hi-Rox event. My role as part of the BOE is to use the same approach I did as a teacher. How is what I'm doing, saying, and implementing going to benefit the students of the district? I will use my ability to communicate and my desire to reach consensus to partner with the board members. I look forward to peeling back some of the layers on how the district communicates and see if there is areas of improvement. I want to ensure that the information that we have gets into the hands of the people that need it. And recently, at the Board of Ed meeting at the end of September with the conversations around a shared calendar to demonstrate the diversity of the community, I'd really love to dig into that and get one published. Thank you.
Serving on the Board of Education has been a great honor, to look out for what we value the most, our children and their education, on behalf of our great community, to ensure an excellent education for every student and value for our taxpayers. I am Lucy Lee. I am a current board member seeking reelection. Professionally, I'm a PhD scientist, educator, and most importantly, mother of three children who are all attending our district schools. And I myself am daughter of a teacher. People often say, "Serving on the Board of Ed is a thankless job." Many of us here have been working hard at it. I extend my greatest appreciation to my four colleagues here in this room and candidates who aspire to join the rank and serve this important role. Thank you for stepping up, aspiring to serve, and sharing ideas that I look forward to. I hope more talented and dedicated committee members will be inspired to step up and serve this role in the future years to come. I am seeking reelection because I care about education. I have a vision to provide a well-rounded, balanced, and excellent education for all students in a safe environment, to empower, respect, and partner with parents and families, and to equip students with resilience, skills, knowledge, and character so that they're ready for the opportunities in the life directions of their choosing. I would like to continue to bring this vision to fruition, translate it into excellent education for every student and value for all taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you to both the CSA and BRTV for making tonight possible. I think this is a great opportunity for everyone to hear from all the candidates so that they can make informed decisions in this election. For those who don't already know me, my name is James Maloney, although most people know me as Jim. I have worked as a software engineer for more than 25 years and have two children, one who graduated from BRHS last year and another who is currently a sophomore. My wife and I chose to move our family to Bridgewater primarily because of the highly rated school system. Like you, my children's education has always been a priority for me, and I work hard to ensure they have everything they need for success while also teaching them how to advocate for themselves. I have sat at the dining room table guiding them through difficult homework, reached out to teachers when they've struggled, and advocated for proper support in 504 and IAP meetings. I've been there for their successes too: academic and community service achievements, theater and choir performances, Lego robotics competitions, and graduations. I'm ready to bring the same dedication I have spent on my own family to ensure that the Bridgewater Raritan School District continues to provide the best possible education for all of our students while also ensuring that taxpayer money is being used responsibly.
Hi, I am Kethrin Maxwell, a wife, mother, and resident of Martinsville for 22 years. I am a first-generation immigrant. As a daughter of Cuban refugees who fled the Castro regime, the value of education was instilled at me at a very young age. Consequently, besides working in our small family business, I made the most of the educational opportunities that were available to me in this country. I love children and youth, and for this reason, I became a teacher and taught in primary and secondary school. Later, I earned a master's and doctoral degree in counseling psychology and taught at the college and graduate level. So I'm Kethrin Maxwell, esposa y madre, y residente de Martinsville desde hace 22 años. Soy hija de refugiados cubanos que huían en el régimen de Castro. El valor de la educación fue inculcado en mí desde pequeña. Además de trabajar en el pequeño negocio de mis padres, yo aproveché al máximo las oportunidades educativas que me brindaron en este país. Me encantan los niños y jóvenes, y por eso estudié maestría y enseñé en la escuela primaria y luego en la escuela secundaria. Y después estudié psicología y fui profesora de psicología en la universidad. Me postulo para la junta de educación para proteger lo que es más importante para nosotros, nuestros hijos. Priorizar la educación de ellos y respetar el papel de los padres como quienes más quieren y más se preocupan del bienestar y educación de ellos. As a result of my background education and experience, I am aware of what is needed to realize one's potential. A firm and solid primary and secondary education is the major pathway for young people to succeed and become positive contributors to society. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all to who made this night possible. I'm a mom of three children with disabilities, rare diseases, and complex medical needs. Two of my children live with rare diseases and one lives with two. I'm also a longtime education advocate and the president and co-founder of an educational nonprofit. My husband's family moved here in 1968. This community isn't just where we live, it's where we chose to raise our children in 2008. I'm running because I believe our schools should work for every child, not just those who fit neatly in a box. My advocacy didn't begin in a boardroom, it began at my kitchen table, fighting for my children and others like them. When that didn't come, I became a homeschool mom. This experience showed me how many families face the same and how our district can grow to be more inclusive and accommodating. I have real-world experience, lived every day. I've spent years advocating for families navigating systems and fighting for children who are often overlooked. I built solutions, led initiatives, and founded that nonprofit while raising children with complex needs. I've also worked alongside parents in New Jersey, advocating for virtual and innovative learning. Because every child learns differently. This is in theory, this is action. This is leadership you can see and measure. Hands-on, everyday experience that stands loud and tall when making decisions that impact students, families, teachers, and taxpayers. What drives me is simple: transparency, excellence, and accountability. Decisions that impact thousands of families should never be made behind closed doors. They should be made with public input, honesty, and integrity. I believe in protecting what makes this district strong: our students, parents, educators, and our community's passion for excellence while ensuring that every student, regardless of need, feels seen, valued, and supported. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the CSA and BRTV, Mr. Black and Mr. Linsor for setting up this night, to Sarang and Brooke, and all the students who are here taking time out of their evening to be here with us. Thank you. I am Stephen Singer, and I am seeking reelection to the Board of Education. I am in my sixth year as a board member and my third year as president of the board. I'm an attorney with an engineering firm, a husband of a middle school educator, and a proud father of two, including a recent graduate and a junior at the high school. Over 20 years ago, my wife and I chose to make Bridgewater our home, and we couldn't be happier that we did. When our daughter started at Adamsville, I began attending board meetings as a liaison to the PTO. I didn't attend board meetings with a specific goal or an issue that I wanted addressed. Adamsville needed an advocate at board meetings, and I was happy to give my time and energy to support our school and our families. As a result, I've been at board meetings either in the audience or as a trustee for well over a decade. I'm proud of what our board and what our school district have accomplished in my six years on the board. Three years ago, I was in this very room, looking at this very camera, talking about the benefits of the proposed referendum, which was passed with overwhelming support of the communities of Bridgewater and Raritan. And we're starting to see those referendum proposals become reality, with secure vestibules in every school, new windows in HVAC units being installed, and full-day kindergarten being piloted. Starting next year, families will no longer have to shell out $10,000 to $20,000 for private kindergarten, as our district will have full-day kindergarten for the very first time. As an experienced board member, it is my priority to make sure that our schools have the supports necessary to make successful changes. It is important that the board maintains a high-level view and a steady hand, with eyes on the future of the district. I want to thank the Bridgewater community for giving me the opportunity to serve as a board member. I come to the board not to serve any particular agenda, but because I have the skill set and the mindset necessary to help every student in Bridgewater and Raritan achieve their full potential and to keep Bridgewater Raritan Regional School District among the very best in the state. Thank you, and vote for me in column B.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the first question. What are the strengths of BRSC that needs to be preserved and protected because they directly contribute to the district's success? And what are the opportunities for growth? Please name two in each area. We will start this round with Ms. Fahardo.
Thank you so much. So, first strength that I'm going to name, and this isn't in a ranking order, this is just the first one I wrote down, is the variety within our district. It's not just the variety of our students, of our teachers, but also of our curriculum and of the clubs that are offered. These things enrich our students' lives and our community. They expose them to new ways of thinking, literature, sports, all allowing them to grow, adapt, learn to respect each other, and become fuller members of society. And that's one of the best things about living here. The second strength is teachers. And I don't want it to come off as cliche, but I genuinely believe that one of the key strengths of our district are that the teachers show up every day and put into actions the plans of the administration and the board. They execute the statewide curriculum, they follow school policies, and they do so each day, wanting the best for the students that they serve. The success of the students and the success of the school in rankings of the district as a whole would not be possible without them. And it was extremely clear as of the board meeting on Tuesday, where there was a readout of the performance of the district. And the readout compared test scores, it compared AP enrollments and standardized tests, and on almost every one, Bridgewater was on top. They were above the state average. And I don't think that that would be possible without all of that support, but then the execution of the teachers. And so, what's even better about this was the commentary from the men that delivered it was, "Yeah, this is all great, but we're also going to talk about how we can use it to get even better." And so Bridgewater doesn't just sit and doesn't say, "Okay, we're good now." There's this constant strive for the next thing. Opportunities for growth, however. While we have amazing enrichment programs and like the dual enrollment program, I'd really be interested to look at how those programs are impacting the arts and what level the arts are included. How can we include more for them? We can't lose the value of the non-academic activities, and we want to create whole people using their creative minds. In addition to that, how does the full-day kindergarten play into it? What are we looking at as far as the curriculum? And I know they're rewriting the curriculum, and they'll use the pilot as an example of how to adjust. But we have so much more opportunity now that the kids will be there for the full day. The second opportunity for growth for me is the communication and visibility. Just because we say something doesn't mean that people hear it. How are we communicating? Where is that communication happening? Do people know where to access it? And so while the district does a phenomenal job of giving us information, it may be in places that people don't know where to look. And so I'd like to take the opportunity to look at the communication plan and assess if there's improvements that can be made. Thank you.
There are many areas of strength in our district, and to limit it to just two is difficult, so I will focus on the root-enabling factors. One of our greatest strengths is our aspiring students and devoted teaching staff, who makes possible the excellent programs that we have and that are so well-attended. Among these programs, I would like to highlight the outstanding art education our district provides, which ranks among the best in the state. Another important strength is in the families of their diverse background and the community of different cultures, who all support and value education. Ours is a community that understands the value of education and is willing to support it, a community that generously supports it with time, talent, and resource to help another grow and to help the children and young people develop into their full potential. The channels of communication and collaboration through which the parents and community's voice can be heard should be valued, preserved, and protected. As a board member, I have been responsive to these voices and will continue to do so. As for areas of growth, we can strengthen transparency and accountability by engaging families and community in decision-making process that has broad impact. Topics such as school start time, school security, and such needs to be worked out collaboratively with all stakeholders. Committees could be formed, and inputs could be sought. Town halls could be held to invite community participation, ensuring decisions are made with consideration of all who are impacted. We should also continue to drive towards excellence for every student by ensuring the high efficiency of core curriculum delivery and student achievement. When we have students in schools for six to seven hours a day, what we teach them and how we develop them is truly the reason why we have a school system. We must improve proficiency rates in reading, math, and science so that all students can succeed beyond high school level. Currently, for 11th graders, reading proficiency is 61% and math proficiency is at 51%. In other words, only slightly more than half of the students are proficient in reading and only about half are proficient in math. We should also enhance our basic science education to better equip students as well. We must provide support for all students, include those with diverse learning styles and needs, to help them achieve proficiency alongside their peers. Let's be clear: Bridgewater outperforms the state average. The numbers I mentioned is not the criticism for our district particularly, but with a long tradition of excellence in this very district, we can and must do better. Thank you.
Two strengths that I see in our district are the administration's data-driven approach to developing programs that support student achievement, as well as a very strong arts program. One thing that is clear when attending board meetings is that the current administration spends a lot of time reviewing student data, analyzing trends, and using those insights to develop stronger programs. This has resulted in significant improvements in graduation rates, AP class participation, and success, and Bridgewater Raritan outperforming state averages in all subjects and all grade levels. This approach is not just about academics, but also student safety. The district has been working on implementing consistent character education in all schools, and the result can be seen in a significant reduction in harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I encourage everyone to check out the recording of the board meeting earlier this week and listen to the comments from the students' representatives. This trend is not just visible on a chart on a slide presentation, but is felt by students in their daily experiences. It's not by chance that for eight years in a row, our district has been recognized as among the best communities in the nation for music education, and BRHS students have received governor's awards in arts education for three years in a row. I have seen a focus on building connections both among different areas of the performing and visual arts, as well as across grade levels, so that by the time a student reaches high school, they have had a steady, consistent journey in the arts. And while the arts are often seen as a way for a student to show they are well-rounded on a college application, I feel that there is value in them in and of themselves. There's been incredible growth in both the number of students participating in the performing arts, as well as the quality of the talents they bring. And I want to make sure that we are preserving what is working well and building upon those successes, especially as grade lows are redistributed throughout the district next year. As far as opportunities for growth, I think that there can be more effort put into addressing struggles students may have in STEM subjects and also improving how the administration communicates not just to parents and community members, but with them. I'm a software engineer. My father was a software engineer, and my mother was a math teacher. STEM subjects have always been a part of my life and something that I excel in. I believe the district has a strong STEM education program, but I would like to see a focus on addressing things like math anxiety. It's not uncommon to hear a student say, "I just can't do math," or "I'm just bad at math." That, to me, is a problem. I think that putting a focus on addressing math anxiety early can benefit students as they get older and start learning higher levels of math and science subjects that are dependent on strong math skills. Not every student needs to excel in STEM, but as they are being taught the tools and skills, they should also be developing the confidence in their own abilities that will allow them to complete graduation requirements or pursue these subjects further if they wish. Regarding communication, this is something that came up in the district's strategic planning process last year: the need to not only communicate to the public, but proactively invite feedback in as well. Very often, we forget to take the step back and ask questions like, "Is this working?" or "What are we overlooking?" So I think it is important that the board and administration find ways to proactively solicit that feedback. I know that there are efforts underway with parent organizations and the council of schools to create better communication. In tandem with that, I think that it is also important to get the Special Education Alliance running again, since it has not been functional for several years. Helping parents of students with disabilities get support and giving them the opportunity to communicate with the district where improvements can be made needs to be a priority.
One strength which needs to be preserved and protected are the voices of the very supportive community we have here in Bridgewater. Since becoming a resident here 22 years ago, I have always admired and respected the very good and kind people of Bridgewater. It is a community that knows the value of education and is willing to support it and helps others and helps the children and young people develop their potential. The voices of the parents and community need to be preserved, protected, and respected because what you have to say matters, not only for your child, but for this wonderful community. Another strength is the variety of courses and extracurricular activities available at Bridgewater. It is absolutely outstanding, and this is something which needs to be preserved and protected. One area for growth is to strengthen the area of job, career, occupations, and educational planning for students by providing support and assistance to counselors working with students in this area. Young people need a better understanding of their interests, strengths, of what they may like to do, where they might like to work, and of the jobs and possibilities available to them after high school. Another area for growth is transparency. For example, most parents are not aware that Policy 5756 states that the district "the district shall accept a student's asserted gender identity" and that "parental consent is not required." Parents do not know that this policy allows minor children to secretly make a major life choice to socially transition and change their names and pronouns in school without parental notification, knowledge, or consent. Many parents do not know this. This is one example of how the board needs to be more transparent. Thank you.
One of Bridgewater's great, greatest strengths is its commitment to high academic standards and with our dedicated educators, who go above and beyond to help each student reach their full potential. The culture of excellence is something we must protect and continue to invest in. Our teachers and staff do go above and beyond. And protecting this culture of excellence is essential to the district and its ongoing success. The second is our community. It is so deeply engaged. Families actively participate and advocate and partner with our educators and all of our school staff and the administration to ensure that all students walk away with something extremely amazing from this town. Opportunities for growth. Expand inclusion and individualized learning. Ensure every student, including those with disabilities, unique learning needs, and including those that are medically complex, have access to an environment that allows them to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Not one child is the same. And the one-size-fits-all approach has to go in 2025. Second area for growth. Strengthen transparency and communication. Improve collaboration between administration, staff, and families so that decisions impacting students are made openly and with trust, fostering stronger, sustainable outcomes. Decis, sorry, decisions should always be made with input from all stakeholders and residents.
The size of our district helps contribute to the success of our students while bringing challenges on its own. Because our schools house so many students and staff, the district is able to offer a wide range of programs to meet the needs of our students, whether in academics, athletics, the arts, or volunteering. Preserving these programs requires budgetary support, both in terms of facilities and staffing. While other districts are seeing soaring double-digit tax increases, BR has been able to maintain our great schools while keeping tax increases stable. As a board member and a taxpayer, I am fully aware of the impact these tax increases have on our community members. But I hope that the community can see the benefits of improved facilities and continued excellence in our staffing, whether that benefit takes the form of increasing property values, the rise in the graduation rate, which most recently is 97%, or the many successes that our students achieve every single year. Along with the size of our students and staff population comes an incredible diversity from which our schools benefit. Our students learn not only from our great staff, but from each other. The diversity brings different perspectives and hopefully our students have a greater understanding of the world beyond the walls, walls of BR, which they will take with them throughout their educational journey. Now, the ability to reach all students in such a large district is a challenge that our schools have faced head-on, most recently through universal literacy screening at the elementary levels and universal PSAT testing at the high school. Work is not done, and this is an area for growth. However, it's important to know that over the past three years, our dual enrollment courses have gone from 40 participants to over 300. We have expanded our AP testing, our AP classes from 750 to over 950 students over the past few years. Almost a third of our students take an AP class and they're still succeeding. Our district focuses on, our district goal focuses on equity, ensuring that opportunities are available to all students and that all of our students receive the support necessary to achieve in whatever form that achievement takes. The work is not done and I am confident that our staff, with the support of the board, will continue to find ways to provide quality education to students at every single level. Three years ago, I stood up here and discussed the need to update our buildings, some of which are over 60 years old. I think Mr. Lindsay said that the high school opened up in 1959, I think is what he said today. With the support of our community and the passing of the referendum, our district has been able to replace windows, toilets, and electrical systems throughout the schools. But the work on our facilities does not end with the passing of a referendum. There are millions of dollars worth of projects that simply could not be included in the referendum. It is the work of the board to prioritize these projects and ensure that our tax, tax dollars are used wisely to address the needs of these aging facilities. And I also want to talk very briefly about transparency in that our board has been very transparent. During my time on the board, we have been openly broadcasting our, our meetings on YouTube, never shying away from openly discussing an issue or from just simply disagreeing with each other. Presentations are available online as our debate for all to see. As we often say, there's always room for improvement. But I think credit needs to be given where it's due and our board has been very transparent. Thank you.
Bridgewater Raritan School District has many strengths that should be preserved and protected. One of the most important in the district is our commitment to hiring exceptional, dedicated faculty, an essential factor to maintaining our status as a high-achieving district. I'm not sure that everyone knows, but Bridgewater Raritan High School has made a major leap. Now number 35 in New Jersey and 569 nationwide. It is important that we continue to hire exceptional faculty in order to remain a high-achieving district. Another key strength is the wide range of clubs, activities, programs, which help support our students not only academically, but also through enriching extracurricular activities that meet the needs and interests of many students. But there are areas of growth. Special education is a critical opportunity for growth in our district. As a former special education teacher, I've seen the system from the inside. Its strengths, its limitations, the toll it takes on families when their children's needs are treated as secondary to budget constraints or logistical challenges. While we have many dedicated educators and staff working hard with our students, I believe we can do more and I believe we can do better. There is a real opportunity to rethink how we approach special education by having strong collaboration with families, more professional development, and a district-wide culture that sees inclusion as a shared responsibility. My own understanding continues to evolve. Serving on the board has deepened my awareness of the systematic barriers families face and how often advocacy falls on their shoulders. I see this as a clear area of growth, not just for servicing or staffing, but how we listen, respond, and lead. Another key area of growth is school security. Every student and staff deserves to feel safe when they enter our schools. And that safety starts the moment a child walks into our doors. While we must take steps to improve security, and we have taken many, our security has changed a lot since I've been on the district, I've been on the board, but we can do more. My goal is to have at least one full-time security guard at every single school. I want parents to feel confident and comfortable when they send us their babies, that they feel trust, that they can trust us with their kids. With the right approach, school security can become, the school personnel can become a trusted member of our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the second question. Do you support shifting high school start times and elementary start times? And how would you address the challenges this creates for families and the district? We will start this round with Dr. Lee.
In an ideal world, schools would all start within the same optimal time window for all students. This means high schools should not start too early and other schools should not start too late. The current discussion about school start time is largely a transportation issue. One, using a tiered bus system, namely, one bus route needs to be completed to transport one group of students to one school and then transport another group of students to another school using the same bus. When this happens, where this system is used, compromises have to be made in this practical situations. I believe primary schools, where students are more dependent on parents to get them ready for the bus in the morning, should not start too late. A late start for young grades not only impacts parents' work schedule, but also affects young students, who are often awake, alert, and ready to learn, yet cannot begin their school day because of transportation limitations. It is possible to better define which requirements can be relaxed and which cannot when we do optimization with busing routes. Having a start time for primary schools that's not too late should be one of the unrelaxing requirements as it ensures both quality learning for young students and support for families with typical work schedule. Thank you.
I think the first thing to recognize is that the decision about shifting start times and reworking transportation routes is an operational decision, not a policy one, and therefore is the administration's decision to make, not the board's. That said, part of the reason for changing start times is because of the switch to full-day kindergarten and the subsequent grade-level redistribution, practically making it necessary to start from a clean slate with transportation routes. Since transportation costs have been one of the biggest strains on the district's budget in recent years, this is an opportunity to optimize routes for more efficiency. And with a cost of $100,000 to $130,000 per bus, that can be significant. Ultimately, I think these cost benefits will be a big help with budget planning and later start times at the high school will lead to greater academic and athletic achievements for students and contribute to improved health and wellness for students, teachers, and staff. I do realize that there are concerns, not only from families, but teachers and staff, about how these changes will affect schedules for sports and other after-school activities, as well as the need for before and after care depending on what the administration decides. As a candidate, I have made an effort to reach out to parents and employees in the district and listen to their concerns. Regardless of what decision the administration makes, if I am elected, I will work to advocate for the needs of everyone in the community and ensure the least amount of disruption as the plans for next year are being implemented.
School start times are linked to the challenges involved in the transportation of students in a town which is geographically spread out in conjunction with the location of schools while at the same time not raising transportation costs. It would be helpful to investigate the possibility of a later state start time for high school students and an earlier start time for younger students. The current 7:20 a.m. start time for high school makes the school day very long for high school students who typically have many after-school activities, oftentimes till 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. This later start time, this later start time for younger students affects many parents of young students who need to pay for before-school and after-school care for their children because of the late start time. So it would be helpful to investigate the possibility of a later start time for high school students and an earlier start time for younger children. Thank you.
I support later start times for high school students and I believe students should have a justifiable voice in the discussion. However, this should not be treated as an administrative decision, yet that is, is exactly what is happening. A change that impacts thousands of families, teachers, transportation routes, and children's childcare routines is being treated as an operational issue when it is actually a major policy decision. This is a policy decision because it affects students' family schedules, staff transportation, the district's budget, and taxpayers. All issues with district-wide implications and long-term significance. Decisions like this should require board oversight, public input, and formal approval, not just administrative implementation. I would advocate for a community-based task force, including students, parents, teachers, transportation, staff, and special education representatives to study the logistics and bring forward realistic recommendations. The goal is simple, make changes with families, not to families, balancing student wellness with practical, community-driven solutions. Again, this is a major policy issue and should be treated as such.
Well, I want to start off by saying that the board does not actually set school start times. It is an operational issue, but decision that is made by our school administrators. Back in 2021, when we had a flood in the middle school and we had a transportation shortage because a certain bus company could not meet their routes early on, the school start times for their elementary schools were changed. And that was a, that was a operational decision that was made by our administration. School ethics require that the board can't actually administer the schools. We have to make sure that they're running well. And to do that, we do what the board does, which is engage in transportation studies. We've been talking about school start times actually for at least six years at this point. And this is the second time that we've had a transportation study on this. But regardless, I fully support the change in high school start times. And I said so at our September 9th board meeting, which is available online. I support the shifting of high school start times, but I understand the impact that that will have on other families as it will change other school start times. But the decision to start school at 7:20 wasn't, at the high school, wasn't based on the curricular need or the sleep cycle of teenagers. It was done to address transportation issues. What the board can do is make sure that the various concerns that come from families, already, okay. The board can make sure that the various concerns that come from families are heard and taken into consideration by the district administration and that they come up with the ideas to solve those problems. One idea that has been bandied about recently is opening up the elementary schools earlier before school so that parents can drop off, kids will have their children supervised by district staff, and they can eat breakfast there and be with their friends beforehand. I fully support this. I also support before, before care for our students, having gone through that myself. Thank you all.
I support shifting school start times when it benefits students and helps the district operate more efficiently. I understand this is a complex issue. Transporting thousands of students each day means we can't have all of our schools start at the same time, even though that would be easier for many families. Balancing transportation logistics with the needs of different age groups is a real challenge. But our responsibility is to make a decision that serves the greatest number of students while being mindful of how these decisions will impact families. From a financial perspective, changing school, school start times will also make us more efficient. With declining enrollment, we have an opportunity to reduce the number of buses on the road, which will help cut costs. I recognize that any shift in times will require adjustment and may create new challenges for many families. That's why it's important to offer meaningful support, like before care and after care, and late buses, which I strongly support, especially for student athletes and working parents. That said, it is important to be clear. The decision to shift school start times start lies, sorry, ultimately lies with the administration, not the Board of Education. As a board member, my role is to ask questions, ensure the decision-making process is transparent, and advocate for support that helps families navigate these changes.
To be direct, I do support the shift of the high school start times, not only based on my experience as a mother of a teen, but as a teacher of students at the high school level. But let's remember that this is a nuanced situation. The introduction of full-day kindergarten, while it's going to be amazing for those of you that get to participate, has caused the district to reorganize the schools. This alone is cause for changing busing and start times. Currently, the elementary schools don't all start at the same time. Adamsville, Bradley Gardens, JF Adamsville, Bradley Gardens, JFK, and Van Holton are starting almost at 9:00 a.m., while the others don't start until around 8:30. Yes, this needs to be fixed. And in a district of our size, it's impossible to have all schools starting at 9:00 a.m. It would cost three times as much as it does now. Not possible. So yes, the district needed to look at rerouting buses, adjusting start times, and making changes. Deciding which schools should start earliest and latest is based on the population and size of those schools, not just age, not just sleep needs, not just where they live in the district. Even... Excuse me. So the district did the best thing. They hired a firm with the expertise to analyze and evaluate and recommend what the school should do for busing times. Is what they proposed perfect? No. And the district knows that. They heard this at the Board of Ed meetings, and they've heard the feedback. And what I heard at the board meeting on September 30th was that there was a request for the firm to reevaluate bringing the time of the elementary school closer to 9:00 a.m. And I'm looking forward to seeing that when it's published. But I'm not going to pretend that the changes won't create challenges. And I'm not going to say that people will just figure it out, because that's very flippant. What I am going to say is that the administration and the board have already started talking about options to move it to help. And a couple were mentioned here. Moving some start times closer to 9:00, offering opening the schools with supervision, different from before-care. And I'm sure there will be more. Once the decision by the administration has been made on the school's start times, then we can have productive conversations about what can be done to help those schools that need help with those times. And I look forward to being a part of those conversations in January.
Thank you, everyone. And now for the third and final question. What are you uniquely bringing to our students as a candidate? We will start this round with Mr. Maloney.
So, one thing to know about me is that I love digging into data and doing research in order to make informed decisions. I do my best to approach a problem with a clear mind, free from bias, and let the facts be the guide to the best decision. While everyone will have their own point of view, and we may not agree on how best to solve an issue, it's important to me that we all start with the same basic understanding of the facts for whatever is in front of us. Only then can we have an honest discussion and work together towards a solution. I've been an active volunteer in the schools for as long as I've lived here. I've helped out at year-end celebrations, decorating hallways, serving food, even taking a turn in a dunk tank at Eisenhower one year. I've chaperoned field trips, helped build sets for the high school theater productions, organized volunteers, volunteered my own time at celebrations for teachers and staff, and fundraised thousands of dollars to help support programs. As a result of this, I have helped to build strong connections with parents, students, teachers, administrators, and even some current board members. This collaborative approach with connections to everyone involved in making decisions, as well as those affected by them, I feel would be an asset to the board, to the students in our district, to parents, and to the taxpayers.
What I uniquely bring to our students as a candidate are my background, education, and experience. I am bilingual in English and Spanish, and am also bicultural. This is something unique I bring as a candidate so I can become a bridge between the board and the wider Bridgewater Raritan community. My background as a daughter of Cuban refugees gives me a deep appreciation of the value of education and of being a positive and productive member of American society, particularly in gratitude for what the United States offers us. Having worked in my parents' family business and having taught at the primary, secondary, college, and graduate school levels, I am very aware of what is required of students for them to succeed in the real world and to succeed in college and graduate school. Something unique I bring in my knowledge is my knowledge and experience in the mental health field. I have a doctorate in counseling psychology. I have provided bilingual psychological counseling and assessments for clients for over 25 years in diverse settings, including schools, college counseling centers, and private practice. And for 14 years, I have served on the state level on the New Jersey Licensing Board of Marriage and Family Therapy and Professional Counselors. So I have experience serving on a board to protect New Jersey residents, their safety and welfare, and to ensure that professionals meet and maintain high standards of practice. Something unique which I bring to the Board of Education.
I bring a unique perspective as both a parent and an education advocate. As a parent of children with different needs, I know firsthand how decisions at school affect students, not just in the classroom, but at home in their daily lives. I've experienced those exact challenges that families still face, and I'm committed to making sure those voices are finally heard. I also bring years of advocacy experience, working to ensure that all children, regardless of learning style or ability or who they are, have access to education that they deserve. This experience has taught me how decisions on policy, staffing, and resources directly impact students, families, and teachers. And it gives me the insight to propose practical, effective solutions. I bring transparency, empathy, and accountability to everything I do on a daily basis. I believe every child deserves to be seen, heard, and supported. And that success isn't just about grades. It's about making sure students have the resources, guidance, and opportunities they need to continue to grow and thrive. My goal is to help Bridgewater continue its strong record of success while making sure no student is left behind. I believe decisions about our schools should involve students, families, teachers, and taxpayers, creating an environment where everyone can succeed and feel valued. I see my role as both a listener and a leader, someone who brings perspective, care, and solutions to the challenges our students and families face every day.
What sets me apart from the other candidates is my experience as a member of the Board of Education. I've served as a volunteer on this board for six years, and I've devoted many hundreds of hours to serving the Bridgewater Raritan community in this capacity. During the referendum, I met with parents and I met with stakeholders throughout the community to discuss the needs of our students and how we can ensure their continued success. For the past four years, I've taken time off of work to attend workshops offered by the New Jersey School Boards, learning from experts how to be a more effective board member. In fact, I'll be heading down there next week for a conference, where I hope to learn about the challenges faced by other schools in New Jersey and the successes that other districts have had, which can be implemented in our schools. One full day of the conference is spent learning just about legal issues that might have an impact on our schools. And that might not be interesting to most people, but sadly, it is to me as an attorney, so I attend those lectures. My devotion to learning all I can about being an effective board member has resulted in my certification as a master board member. And I'm working towards the next-level certification as a school board leader because I can always learn more. I don't come to the board with a political agenda. I come to the board with the hope that I can help our district make decisions that are in the best interest of our students, from pre-K all the way through 12th grade. I know that I don't have all the answers, which is why I keep an open mind and value new ideas. But I do have the experience and the dedication that our school board needs. I remain deeply committed to working with my fellow board members to make thoughtful, informed decisions that support every student, every family, and the future of our district. I thank the voters of Bridgewater for giving me the opportunity to serve our community, and I hope that I will be given the chance to continue to do so. Thank you.
I am bringing the ability to listen openly and build common ground, even with those who see things differently. At a time when many struggle to hear differing perspectives, I believe thoughtful listening is essential to making informed, rational decisions. Our shared goal should always be the success of our students. And achieving that requires collaboration and mutual respect. I'm also bringing years of experience as a teacher with a deep understanding of how schools function day-to-day, as well as three years on the board that has broadened my perspective of educational policy, governance, and procedures. These experiences have strengthened my ability to navigate complex issue with clarity and purpose.
I'm also going to say that what makes me unique is having been in the classroom with students. So... But it is something. So at both the middle school and high school level, I've taught kids. I don't just have my own children as a model for what these children are like. And I think that's something that can be lost on some adults who haven't been in that situation. The act of being a teacher or a member of the community involved in children's clubs and organizations, you start to realize that while your children are special, each child has that same level of special. And it's not about what you're doing for your kids. It's about what you're doing for kids. And I was recently reminded of a student I once taught. A person and I were talking, and they realized that there was a chance that I taught their niece during my time when I was in Hillsborough. And they eventually shared a picture of her with me. And I knew right away, and I knew her. But not just her name, and not just her face. I knew her. I knew what she was like. I knew how she learned. I knew what made her enjoy one topic over another. I can see where she sat, and I taught her for two years, so in two different classrooms, where she sat. I can see how her brows came together when she had a question, and she would sit and she would just think about it, and her lips would purse. I can see the silent laugh she would have when she uncovered a subtle meaning of a text that we were reading. Her smile, and how bright it would be when she enjoyed the challenge of an assignment. And I started to get emotional, like I might be now, because this student was special. She lit up when she smiled. And to have that connection with who she is today, it was beautiful. And I sometimes wonder if parents really understand how much their children mean to teachers. For me, I taught her for 55 minutes a day for 180 days. And over the course of a lifetime, that doesn't seem like much. But clearly, her smile has stayed with me since I saw her eight years ago. So being a member of the board, you have to remember that each child is special. Each child has unique needs. Our job on the board is to be the voice of all students, not just some, and not just ours. So yes, I will bring my technology background, my project management brain, my ability to go off track only for a short period of time and bring it right back to topic. I ensure that conclusions are made and consensus is reached. But what am I really bringing? Empathy, care, trust, honesty, and the desire to see kids light up.
What I uniquely bring to our board, I am a current board member of the Bridgewater Raritan Regional School District Board of Education. Professionally, I am an educator and entrepreneur. I hold a PhD in material science and a Bachelor's of Science in teaching physics. My work experience spans higher education, K-12, and as well as industry research and project management. As incumbent board member, I have gained a solid understanding of how the board operates and can continue the important work that has been started. I have also learned on a broader level how legislation influences our policies and curriculum, which is vital to the board's policy work. Our local community is impacted by the laws and guidelines that is from legislation and the state agencies that affects our students, teachers, and families. I understand how associations and organizations, such as the New Jersey School Board Association, the State Board of Education, and the legislative body, shape our educational practices. This knowledge is valuable for developing and implementing policies and best practice in our district. As a first-generation immigrant, my background also helps me understand the experiences, challenges, and culture adjustment many families face. Having successfully navigated them, I hope to be both an inspiration and a resource for students and families going through similar experiences. I also serve on the local board that enjoys... that I enjoy organizing community events and sharing cultural experiences with the broader Bridgewater Raritan community. I hope my cultural background and my cultural background would help me serve as liaison with the community. I have three children in the district, spans from elementary school to high school. I can relate to abroad experiences in our schools, not just from one school or one age group. I hope to be able to connect and represent abroad community. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And now for our closing statements for this evening. We will begin with Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you. My personal development and professional and family life have taught me how important the school years are for the overall development of children and youth. Schools can be a place where students develop competence and confidence in academics and extracurriculars and develop their unique strengths and where connections and relationships with others are built during the day and in after-school activities. Or it can be a place where students do not achieve their unique potential, do not develop their strengths, do not build their self-confidence, and where students do not feel connected with others. I believe each and every student is unique, precious, and indispensable. I would like to apply my broad knowledge and experience on the school board to help ensure that all Bridgewater Raritan students can obtain an excellent education, whether the student is college-bound, seeks a vocational or business path to work after graduating high school, or has special needs for achieving suitable employment, and that the school is a place where students can build relationships and feel connected with others. In appreciation of the indispensable role that parents play in the lives of their children, I also wish to apply my knowledge and experience to help ensure that parents are respected and honored as the principal decision-makers in their child's education, development, and overall well-being. I am very impressed with both of my running mates, Dr. Lucy Lee and Deanna Nye. Both are outstanding women and mothers and professionals who are knowledgeable and responsive to the voices of families and communities. I believe our combined attributes will bring beneficial contributions to the Board of Education. Please support Lee, Maxwell, and Nye for Board of Education and vote for all three of us in Column D. Thank you.
This isn't about who's most popular or who speaks the loudest. It's about standing up for what's right, even when it's difficult or uncomfortable. I'm not running to win a title. I'm running because as a parent of children with different needs and someone who has spent years advocating for families, I know firsthand how decisions at school affect students, parents, teachers, and even the taxpayers. Every decision we make as a district must always put students, parents, teachers first, with honesty, accountability, and transparency. Our tax dollars are valuable, and they should not be going up while enrollment is going down, all while we lost 33 staff members. Every dollar should be spent carefully in ways that directly support our students and the teachers who guide them every day. I will never be afraid to ask the tough questions or challenge decisions that don't serve our kids, our families, teachers, and our community. Students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers deserve to be heard. Students deserve leaders who truly listen, and that is not negotiable. At the end of the day, it's about creating... At the end of the day, it's about creating a district where every child feels seen, supported, and valued, where every parent and teacher feels respected, and where every voice matters. Leadership must listen, observe, and respond thoughtfully, always with students at the center. I believe we can continue to build Bridgewater. It's a fantastic district. We can all be proud of one that upholds these high standards while never losing sight of each student's unique needs, the dedication of every teacher, and the support of every family. That's why I am running alongside Dr. Lucy Lee and Dr. Katrin Maxwell. Together, we will fight for every student and family every single day, bring in real-world experience, advocacy, and my perspective as an advocate to guide every decision. Thank you.
As a board member, I often have the pleasure of attending different school events and witnessing firsthand the accomplishments of our students. I have sat at many board meetings many times. Whether you're a fan of music, sports, the arts, theater, debate, robotics, pretty much anything, our students have the opportunities to engage in these activities, and our community has the opportunity to cheer on our students. I'm a big fan of BR and everything that it has to offer. Over the past six years, our district has undergone a lot of changes. Our athletics facilities at the high school have undergone a facelift, as has our auditorium. Our classrooms will soon be air-conditioned to provide our students a better academic experience, and our schools now have secure vestibules. More changes on the horizon with full-day kindergarten and the movement of the 4th and 6th grades to schools more fully aligned with their curriculum. These are once-in-a-generation-level changes. These are exciting times to be in BR, and they might be trying times, requiring patience as well as faith in our staff. Our board needs trustees who are focused on doing what is best for all of our students, tackling district-wide issues, and listening to the ideas raised by parents, students, and staff, as well as the wisdom of our district administrators. We need to come together as a community to support our children, whether that's cheering at the football game tomorrow as BR takes on Westfield, make sure you wear black as I hear it's a blackout, enjoying an elementary school concert, coming to the Festival of the Arts, or just keeping up to date by reading the Prowler online. We are BR, and I am grateful to have the opportunity to serve this great BR community. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As a parent, educator, and active member of the Bridgewater Raritan community, I am deeply committed to the success and well-being of all students in our district. I believe that preserving the strengths will make our schools exceptional while also listening, learning, and working collaboratively to ensure every student has the tools and support they need to thrive. If elected, I will continue to serve this community with integrity and independent judgment. I'm an independent thinker. I may not be the most outspoken at public Board of Education meetings, but I am always listening and learning. I will continue to listen in order to serve this community to the best of my ability. Again, I appreciate your time, and I want to thank the Bridgewater CSA, Mr. Black, Mr. Linzer, Mr. Hamburger, and all of the wonderful students who put this event together. Thank you to all the residents for your support. And again, I'm Emily Kalistry, and I'm asking for your vote on November 4th. Vote, column C.
A lot of questions for the candidates throughout this process mentioned their acts of service that the candidates have done. And I felt a little down on myself for not having this exhaustive list of things. And so people may wonder why I'm running now. Why am I interested in the Board of Education? And for me, it's a little complicated, but I'll try to explain. It's only recently, over the last couple of years, that I've truly found a sense of community in Bridgewater that I never had before. And this community has shown me a multitude of ways to give back, to participate, to grow, and to be a part of something. And through this growth has come the realization that I do have a lot to offer, both professionally and personally. I am an excellent candidate for the Board of Education. Prior to deciding to run, I've always watched the streamings of the meeting, so thank you for those. And since deciding to run, I've attended every meeting in person. I attended the NJSBA info sessions, and I've been doing my research. And I will not be starting from zero in January. I've been starting now, planning and participating. Professionally, I manage multimillion-dollar budgets annually on my own. I execute executive-level initiatives constantly. I work across the organization with various people with competing priorities, and I do so seamlessly. And I have worked in the classroom, but during that time, I did not only teach English. I served on the principal's advisory and the superintendent's advisory. Both were requested of me within my first year as a teacher. I was identified early on for my level of professionalism, my ability to connect to my peers, my vision and insight, and the value that I was able to bring, having come from the private sector prior to becoming a teacher. I am reliable, and I achieve what I set out to do. But personally, the realization of why to run for Board of Education is that the board really matters, that New Jerseians take pride in education, and that I can again have the ability to make kids light up all through being elected by your community, and I can't think of a higher honor. And mostly what sealed the deal for my running was when I was talking to my son about it, and I explained why I was interested and what the role is, and I asked him if he would mind. And I explained some of the issues facing the district and how I might help solve them. And we talked about how those issues actually don't apply to him or his sister, but they apply to someone, and so it's worth fixing. And so when I asked him if it was okay, he said, "I have a super cool mom who wants to do super cool things." So I kind of had to at that point. So, thank you to the students and the advisors for this night. You'll find me at the end of the ballot in column E, and I'm Kim Farado. Thank you.
Our community aspires to provide the best opportunity for the students and supports our schools. Parents' role as primary decision-makers is essential to their children's success, and schools should keep parents fully informed while reflecting the community's aspirations. I have been a consistent voice for students' achievement, educational excellence for all, responsible spending, and enriching students' experiences using a common-sense, data-driven, evidence-based approach while listening to families. I look forward to a board with supportive leadership and constructive collaboration. I have been working collaboratively with our board, a recent example being advancing a resolution to enhance STEM education at state level at the delicate assembly. I have been joined in this campaign and seeing the spirit of collaboration through this campaign. I'm joined by Dr. Katrin Maxwell and Ms. Deanna Nye. Dr. Maxwell is a highly respected scholar in her professional field of counseling psychology, and I believe she will bring valuable knowledge and insight in our board to benefit the students in that way. Ms. Deanna Nye, with her experience in special education and supporting students with complex needs, will help ensure all students are valued, supported, and seen. I envision a board that, with addition of these areas of expertise and advocacy, brings together unique strengths and perspectives, working independently yet collaboratively to serve every student in the district. These combined experiences with this team cover a broad and diverse spectrum that reflects the needs of our students. Together, we share a vision of excellent education for every student and value for all taxpayers. This November, vote, column D. Lee, Maxwell, and Nye. Thank you.
When I first made the decision to run for the Board of Education this year, I had to collect signatures from other Bridgewater residents who believed that I would be a good candidate to have on the ballot. And on the last page of that form, there's a line to include a slogan that would be printed underneath my name on the ballot. And it said, "Must not exceed three words." I thought to myself, "How can I sum up everything that I want to say in just three words?" I thought about it and conferred with friends for their opinion, and they had opinions. But ultimately, I settled on "Trust in Education." To me, it's not about blind trust, where we just accept whatever is in front of us without question. It is about earned trust. Earned trust means that as a parent or as a taxpayer, you have the confidence in your elected representatives to look out for the best interests of the students and to be responsible with your tax dollars. Earned trust comes from open and honest communication, constructive feedback, consistency, and reliability. As a parent, you want to trust that when you send your child to school in the morning, they will come home happy and safe with new knowledge to share. A student walking through the doors needs to trust that they are walking into a supportive environment where they can be among friends and focus on their education without distraction. Teachers and staff members should trust that they will have the resources and support needed to do their jobs effectively. And taxpayers want to trust that their money is being spent wisely, without waste, and without straining their own budgets at home. That is why I believe trust in education is important. And if I have earned your trust, then please vote for James Maloney in column A on your ballot. Thank you.
We would like to thank all the candidates for being here with us tonight and for giving an audience the insight into the positions on the issues involving education here in Bridgewater Raritan. On behalf of the Council of Schools Association, we would like to encourage everyone to vote in the school board election during the general elections on Tuesday, November 4th. Please make every effort to get out and vote. Again, thank you to all the candidates for sharing your evening with us, and thank you to all watching this presentation. For the Council of Schools Association and BR TV, I'm Saren Nyer.
And I'm Brooke Pino. Good night.